Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm only running this because the mayor unfortunately cannot be with us tonight. He really wishes he could be, but like a lot of the city staff, it's been slightly out of the weather. It may be my fault, but I'm not gonna blame myself. But it probably is. So anyway, this is gonna be a different kind of city chats, because a lot of the things that we heard of city chats, but time-hold meeting, a lot of the things that we do are external. This is kind of one of the things that's internal, but I think the public will gain a lot from it. And it's kind of just the Angie Show tonight. So this is our finance director, Angie Volkers, and I'm gonna let her walk through one of our new programs. And so you can see how the budget process works, or you can see how everything functions in our finance department. So go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. I will do my best. I'm facing the wrong direction, but we have it that way because we're on a Zoom, and I need the screen to walk you through the program. I will be on the microphone, but if you're having issues hearing me, just let me know, and I will do my best.
Okay, sounds nice. So we, over the last few months, have implemented our ClearGov budget system. We're very excited about it. It kind of brings us up to the modern age in budgeting. Our prior budget system was in an access database, and I think it was at least 20 years old. So we are finally in the modern times, and we are really excited to kind of show this off and show you how it works. The nice thing about it is it's forward-facing to the public, which, as you might know, with our former budget process, we would print a budget binder, and the first time we would amend the budget, it would be outdated, and it was 300 pages, so we weren't printing those every time we did budget amendments. Nice thing about this, the public can go on and see the budget, the current budget, which we put all the amendments in there, so it's up-to-date, as well as the actuals. So we've been incorporating our monthly financials into the system too. So it's kind of a one-stop shop when it comes to the budget and the monthly financial statements. So I will show you, I wanted to kind of show you how to get there first. There's a couple ways. If you go down into the city documents, there's this nice little pop-up right here. That's the version I use, because it's quick. And here we go. So first things first, these tabs are similar to how our budget is currently set up in the physical document. There's an introduction section. This is new and added. We don't have this in our current budget book, but it is the monthly financials and our budget project notes, which I'll go over. The fund summaries, funding sources, which are revenues. And then we have the departmental budgets, which are also called operating budgets. And then our debt is over here on the side. So it's similar to how we currently have our budget, but in an electronic form. But you can print it too, which is nice for the people that like paper, which is me, actually. I'll own that. So in the introduction, we have the cover page. Basically, this cover page just shows, I have to do a lot of clicking. The adopted biennial budget, and as I said, we've been including the amended budget amendments in there as well. So the last time the city council amended the budget was back in November. So this version of the budget includes that budget amendment. So it is the most current budget that the city has. We have all of these, our adopting ordinances are in there, our property taxes and budget ordinances, if you're curious to see those. One of the things we really like about this is the demographics. And this is based on census data. We actually didn't have to add this. It automatically populated when the ClearGov system built our budget for us. So it's kind of nice. It's a little outdated, obviously, because the census data is a little old. We should be getting some new data, hopefully, soon. But it's kind of nice to go in there and see, because a lot of times we get asked, you know, what's our median age, or what's our median income? So all of that stuff can be found in here, which is pretty nice. Org chart is in there as well. You can obviously find that on our city website, but it is included in the budget as well, so that's in there. Our fund structure. So this basically talks about how the city accounts for their money. So what this is, is basically a summary that we have to provide to the state auditor's office each year. And it just talks about how we are considered a cash-based entity, how our funds work, the numbering mechanisms. So you'll hear us talk about the general fund a lot. Those are our 000 series of fund numbers, special revenue funds or the 100 series. So that includes like our EMS fund. And that kind of goes into detail about what those are. I actually have a chart with council, I'll show you later, that kind of sums up what those look like in our actual fund numbers. Our financial policy. This is nice to have in here. This is the most recent policy that council approved. So what we do when we budget is we budget to this policy. This is a very important document to my department, as well as the city council and administration, because it gives us our guidelines on what we need to be striving for, what kind of reserve balances we need, where we want the ending fund balances to be. So we use this a lot during the budget process, and we make sure we're complying with it as we're going through and telling people, maybe they can't have something, because it's gonna put their fund out of whack. So we use that a lot. The budget process is just our budget timeline. So we develop this schedule usually in June of each year. So that'll be coming to council in a few short months, because we're gonna be kicking off budget before we know it. But this is just kind of our schedule, where you'll notice that the finance department takes up the council meetings from about July through December during the budget years. So there's a lot going on, but it keeps us on track. We also have to comply with state laws, so all of the state laws are incorporated into this budget schedule to make sure we are complying with those as well. The monthly financials. So this, we have our January in there. We're wrapping up February as we speak. That should be posted any day. You probably have seen these, if you've looked on our city website. We have our general summary here. There we go. Love those pop-ups. So these are, we do an executive fund summary, which is very high-level. So I feel like when we do our monthly financial statements, these are probably our most important our most important documents that we put out there. This first page, I know you can hardly see it, if at all, but this is a hugely important document. And what this does is it trends where we're at and where we should be at. So up at the very top, our January target, so where we should have been revenue-wise and expense-wise, was 54.17%, which is the 13th out of the 24th month of our budget cycle. So what we do is, in these funds, there are certain items that are like one-time payments that we make at the beginning of the year, or one-time transfers that we make at the beginning of the year. And we have to add these adjustments in there, or else it'll totally skew all of our numbers. A good example is our insurance. We pay that bill in January, and if we didn't add these adjustments to adjust it out over the 12-month period, it would look like the general fund is, already has its budget blown by the end of January each year. So that's these adjustments in here. That's what those are for. It kind of gets a little summary up top to talk about. Kind of, we do hotel motel tax and property taxes, because those are very cyclical, and we have to disperse them out over the 12 months, or else our financials wouldn't be very useful to anybody. So on this page, what I do when I do the monthly financials is I go straight to this percentage here and see if we're on target. So revenues, if they're above target, that's wonderful. If they're below, I start looking and asking some questions. I know there's, I can't tell. I believe the convention center, I'll use that as an example. I think their revenues have been a little below target, but if you go to the expense side, their expenses are way under target. So technically, they're still in balance, because their expenses are trending way less than the budget, even though their revenues are slightly below the target. So that's not a concern. If this expense number was higher than the target, and the revenues was lower than the target, that would be an issue, and we would be having some discussions about what needed to happen to get this budget back in balance. There's very few of those. Most of these look great. So if there are concerns, I always reach out to the departments, talk to the mayor, obviously, and we start talking about what's going on with these funds. But, you know, so far, for the biennium, they're looking good, so that's really nice. Down here is our year-to-date comparisons. Everybody wants to know where we were at last year compared to this year for. These are the common ones. There's property taxes, sales taxes, utility taxes, building permits, real estate excise tax, gas tax, and hotel motel. These fluctuate. We're only in January, so we only have one month's worth of data. So if there's a huge decrease, it's not really alarming at this point, because we have 11 more months to get those back up. But we do watch them. Obviously, there's been a decline in building permits. We've been seeing that for a couple years now, so we've been talking about that a lot. We were also asked to compare, we go back to 2021, to give us a two-year view. You might remember 2021, we were doing great in the building department permits, and it's kind of just tapered off, so you're seeing some pretty big decreases in those numbers. But that's what we budget for. We accommodate for that when we're talking about our revenues for future budgets. So that's this summary. Again, I go straight to the percentages, see where we're at, and start asking questions from there. But usually, no news is good news for me, so if I don't have any concerns, you probably won't hear from me very much, but when I start seeing stuff going a little sideways, there are definitely conversations that are being had. This is another great one-page report on where our fund balances are. So these are the fund balances at the end of January. I always get the question of where's the general fund fund balance at, you know, today? So this is where you go to find those. Important things to look for in this report is obviously negative line items. You don't want to see those. There are a few of the debt line items down here that will go negative for a few months, because we pay those in September, and the transfers don't catch up till the end of the year. By the end of the year, all of these items have got to be positive, or we will be out of compliance with the auditor's requirements. So we are always watching those. Here's another good snapshot of all the funds and where we're at on budget. You have to remember, so if you look at this report, like I was saying, that first sheet has all the adjustments in there for the one-time payments and transfers. This does not. So some of these are gonna look a little skewed, because we haven't added those one-time blips in here and adjusted for those. So that's why it's important to go back to that first page if something looks a little off on this one. We try to make sure those are incorporated in that first summary to supplement this. So that is where we are at with the monthly sum, well, no. Summary reports, sorry. All right, I think we're back online. This is how to get to our website. It's a tutorial, in case anybody needs that. All right, so, good grief, I think I need a mouse. Oh my gosh. Okay, so back in the monthly financials, there are the, we also produce our PDFs. These are the detailed revenue and expense reports. So those have all of the detailed by bars number in those. Somebody asked me actually, like, where can I find a project-specific line item in the budget? You can go in either, the expense report would be where you'd find a project budget, but you can go in this PDF and search. It's a PDF searchable document. So if you go in and search for Hydun Trail, those line items will pop up for you very easily. Fund summaries, so these, these fund summaries are actually really important as well. These are the ones that show the entire fund, the beginning fund balance, your revenues, your expenses, and then the ending fund balance, as far as the budget goes. I put this in here as kind of a, to show people what fund numbers and what fund titles they are, so you can go in here if you're looking for a specific fund. You want to know where EMS is, you go in and find emergency care, and that'll be in your dropdown in here. So that was why that summary page was added. So what these look like again. Any notes about specific items that are budgeted will be in this section. These go in and show the past three years of our biennial budget, plus the current budget and the actuals. So that bar right here is showing the budget, and then the actuals, the dark blue, to kind of show where we're at, just in a bar chart. But here's the actual numbers, if you're curious to see what they look like. ClearGov is actually working on a fix. We are on a biennial budget, and they're just getting used to biennial budgeters, as they call us. So their actual lines and their budget lines only include the second year of our budget. We do have a couple places in ClearGov where we state that these actually include two years, so this is 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, et cetera. They are working on a fix. They're hoping to have that out in the third quarter of this year. They're picking up a bunch of biennial budget people, so they're trying to accommodate us, because we found a few things in their system that would be a little better for us, people on two-year budgets. But these give us three years of budget actuals. The actual where we're at as of the end of January is this fiscal year 2024 line, and then the budget line item is here. So if you're looking, you know, for taxes, we should, the budget's 1.9 million. We're currently at 963,000, so that's what these summaries include. Includes the revenues, the expenses, as well as the ending fund balance. So at the end of the budget cycle, we're hoping to be at about 1.44 million. We're currently at 1.3. So that kind of summarizes what those fund summaries entail. I kind of wanted to show one that has, if we budget for specific line items. This feels very ancient. This was a good one to pull. So when we have like specific line items for expenses, you can go down here and for our, this is our equipment reserve fund, which is our public works, where they purchase their capital items out of. So any notable items outside of normal operating budgeting will include in here, so that we know, you know, by the end of 2024, we should have bought, you know, three pickup trucks, a garbage truck, a street sweeper, which we're doing very good at. I think we've bought pretty much everything on this list at this point. So that's nice to see as well. Historical, there's really nice graphs and tables in all of these. There's also a spreadsheet breakdown. If you're curious on, you know, how that budget is split up, capital outlays. We don't have any debt service, so basically, everything in this fund is a capital outlay. So that's where all of the funding is coded to. Funding sources is our revenues. The, we added a nice set of statistics in here. We can basically add, you know, any historical data we want to, but we kind of picked up some of the higher priority ones that people seem to really care about. This just shows, I get a lot of these questions too, like, how much money do we bring in for permits? Or how much money do we bring in for utilities? That's what all these pie charts are for. You can see, they have these nice little bar graphs with, you know, there's the convention center. So if you're curious, you can click on that and see what the convention center's bringing in as far as marketing and tourism. But these are those sales tax. We went back to 2008 for sales tax, but we wanted to tell the story about how much our sales taxes went up since 2008, because it's a really cool story to tell. Our hotel motel tax is another great story to tell, so you can see how much growth we've had there as well. And another one that I wanted to add, because we're super proud of this, is our assessed valuation versus our levy rate. So you'll see that assessed valuation has continued to climb, and our levy rate has continued to decline. So that's really good. So these are kind of, we enjoy doing these, because we have the data. Like, let's throw it in these tables and show people what it looks like, because it's nice to see it. For the departments, I included another little chart of accounts here, because not everybody knows every bar's number in the budget. There's a lot of them. So you might hear us talk about the general fund a lot, having different departments. The general fund is the big bucket. It's the 001 fund that everybody talks about. But within the general fund, there are many, many departments, and they're all listed right here. And these budget codes right here, so the budget, the fund is 001, but the actual department is 110. And that's our legislative, which is our council budget. 120 is our court, and it kind of goes down the line. So you can pick out, if you're curious to know what the police budget looks like, you're gonna find it in Fund 001, under the two P's section. I also included the rest of the funds, just again, because not everybody has those memorized, and there's a lot of them, to try to make it easier if you're in search of something specific. But these operating budgets are kind of a deep dive. As to where the fund summaries are kind of a overall big picture, these operating budgets are the nitty-gritty of our expenses. So where's our money going? Emergency care, I think that is 15.9%, our utilities, 11. So you'll see the big ones on there. And then you'll see some little ones too, like a lot of this stuff in the general fund. It's in the big, it's in the big fund, but it might just be a tiny little portion of it. So this is where you can go to see where our money is being spent. There's another detail, just a bar chart. You can go in and go through the color codes, and if you hover over them, it'll show you the amounts. And again, here's just the details in here. We are, we actually had, it doesn't look like that. We actually had a request to, oh, there we go. So you can see in the 001, the legislative department, this is what our salaries are budgeted at, and we start getting the benefits. I mean, you can scroll through here. It's a huge, huge document. We did have a request from one of our council members, which was actually a super great request, to freeze the panes at the top, so that when you're scrolling down. So when you're scrolling down, you can constantly see the titles, so these up here. ClearGov actually thought that was such a great recommendation, that they're passing it on to their coding team to get out in their next deployment. So they haven't had anybody ask for that before, so that's pretty nice. It's something, you know, tied to ocean shores in the ClearGov budget system. Debt is, it looks really similar to our current budget. It's just basically PDF documents of, this is the high-level summary on where we're at with our debt, what is left outstanding, how much we're paying off in this budget cycle. And then each, each line item in there has an associated, like, detailed budget, as well as an amortization schedule to show, you know, when these things are gonna be paid off, and how much we're paying annually in principal and interest. That sheet, since I started, has probably, it's about a fourth, I think, of what it was when I started here. So that's another great story to tell. I think that's it, just walking through the system. This, I will say that this portion of it is the external-facing portion, as far as when we dive into the budget this summer. The backend of this system is very robust. We have our personnel budgeting, that Shante is currently working on right now. We have a capital budgeting module. We have the departmental budgeting, so what we will do is add all of our department heads, and they will be able to go in and add their budget requests. Once they add them, we sit down and we start working on it, and then we make sure we balance those budgets and finalize them. And once the council approves the budget, we'll push this digital budget book out again for 2025 and 2026, and we'll keep it rolling. So we're really excited about it. Again, it's gonna be very efficient for us, and we feel like it's very, it's pretty intuitive for the users. So I hope people have gotten to go in there and kind of click around in there. We're always open for suggestions, so if there's something in there that you're like, you know, it would be really easy if you guys could add something like this to help. We love that kind of feedback. We've actually had two things we've added, and one again, that we've passed on to ClearGov to ask them to add for us. So always open for suggestions on improvements. Because it's brand new, we're learning how to use it too, so. I think with that, we can open it up for questions, or if people want to know where to find things, I can try to find them for them.
So when you were in the general fund there, and it showed the different numbers for each, you can't just click on that and go there, or can you?
The, was it the, like, the fund summary?
Yeah, it had all the, all the code, the code for which department, all the numbers for each department.
There isn't. So that's one of the things, yeah, that's kind of, you have to scroll down. Again, if you wanted to search for your, you can search in these PDFs though, that are word-searchable. So if you were looking for something specific, I'll pull up the Hydun Trail, because that's the one I did recently, because someone asked me about it. But you can go in these. So these are our monthly financial reports. And you can go, I can't see if it's actually. See, yeah, so that's where I went to find, when someone asked me, I was like, go in here and just, you can word-search it, and it pops right up, and it shows you the budget, so, and then it shows you the actual as well. So that's an easy way if you're looking for something specific.
Okay, that would just be a suggestion of mine though. Is if you could click on, when you're in that summary, just click on that, and it would take you right to that.
Or the bar charts, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I know this is a part of the software, but it's
but it's questions that come up over time, and people ask, why can't I take the money from over here and use it over here? Could you do a brief... I know you did this at a city chat, but I think we probably have a different audience here today. Do a brief explanation of what a utility is, and how it's self-funded, and what, you know, the various boundary lines that you don't cross.
The boundary lines, yes, I can do that for you. So it's a very simple answer. So this general fund, the big bucket, can use or transfer or move money to whatever of these other funds it would like to. It cannot go in reverse. So the only money that you can transfer or move money from to legally, for any purpose, would be from the general fund. You can't take weatherwaps mitigation land bank money and move it back up to the general fund. That's illegal. I will say that when we do the budget, like the water sewer has capital funds. Obviously, you can transfer within each utility, so you can transfer from our water operations fund to our water capital fund, but you can't move water fund to sewers. So the only fund that's allowed to do whatever it wants is this one right here. And the rest have restrictions on everything. So that's the easiest way I could put it.
You always ask the question. There it is.
Yeah, thank you. Very good presentation so far. I'm not sure how to phrase this. Your department deals with the known numbers, the money that's coming in, the money that's going out, various categories. But we do have expenses coming up that are flexible. The roads don't last forever. The sewer system is gonna need serious work, so on. Does your department deal with those kinds of projections? For instance, we're paying down the debt, and presumably, there's gonna come a point where the debt is mostly paid off, and we'll have a lot of fund money, we think. But probably that is gonna have to go to some of these upcoming large expenditures. So are there any projections on how those large future expenditures are gonna hit us?
Yes, I actually do that on a daily basis. There's... People asking me constantly to find money for them, so. Yeah, so the big items, obviously, is all a part of our budget discussion. The big projects, a lot of them we start saving on for years, before we actually do the projects. A lot of them are grant-funded, so with like the vertical evacuation structure, we would've never been able to do that project without grant money. So that was one of the priorities for our grant writer, was to, you know, work on a grant for that. We do have sidewalks coming up, so we'll be talking about what that could look like. Our street LID is gonna be paid off, hopefully, next year. So we might have some surplus funds available to use for sidewalks. So it's a constant, just thinking ahead on, you know, we're paying stuff off, we're freeing up this money, can it legally be used for that? For this streets, we did the transportation benefit district, which was the sales tax. The EMS, we do another property tax levy. So there's constant, like... There's avenues for funding. We just have to really think ahead strategically, start saving for it, applying for grants, thinking ahead to like, what's the priority? Because there's 10 things I would love to do with LID surplus money, but we can probably only get one thing. So what's the priority? So, the... Yes, we talk about it daily.
I was gonna just add to that. And the city does, that's what we do with some of our internal studies, and then we give that data to Angie, like the capital facilities plan, which we do evaluations long-term, it's what our buildings look like, it's what we're doing with, you know, our roads and our road analysis now. So we give her the data that she needs in order to make those long-term projections for where we need that.
And it's based on council too. Council gives us, you know, kind of a... Actually, I can pop in there and show you this budget project notes. This is our guideline that we get from council, and this is what they want done in 23, 24. We've done a lot of it already, but there's still things we're working on. So one of the things we have a meeting about next week is we're starting to talk about this regional fire feasibility study, to see what that would look like, how we could save costs if we banded with some of the surrounding fire districts and provide better service. Because obviously, our, you know, it's a struggle right now. We have a ton of calls, less staff, so it's just... We're constantly doing these things to figure out what's gonna be a better service, what's gonna be more cost-efficient. But this is a nice little... It does play into your question about how do you plan for these things. So we put a lot of money into the Ojut ditch. How did we fund it? We had some ARPA money we could use, so we carved out a million dollars in ARPA money for that Ojut ditch. Shunook Park, same thing. We wanted to prioritize that, so we put a bunch of ARPA money towards that. So there's little things that come up, funding-wise, and we kind of figure out what fits best. Honestly, we also had our grant writer in every single budget meeting when we created the budget. And if she goes, she's no longer with us, unfortunately, but if she knew there were grant opportunities, she would say, I'm gonna work on a grant for that, and we'll see if we can get the funding from there. Because there's certain items on here we can't get grant funding for, but there's certain items we can. So that was a pretty pivotal thing that we did with her as well. But if you're curious to know where we're at on some of these, so these are all the... These are the projects and capital purchases kind of outside of the normal operating realm. And it's listed on here, you know, what fund it is, what department, what the budget was, and it's by bars number, so you can go search if you're curious. And all the comments over here also talk about who requested it, you know, what the purpose is, things like that. So that's a really... This document is one that I look at quite a lot, because as we're nearing the end of this biennial budget, it's like, okay, we haven't done this, and council wants this done. We actually talked about that downtown revitalization plan two council meetings ago. So that's something we're getting underway as well. So that was a long answer to your question, but hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation so far. A question, I'd like to know what the city does in terms of looking forward, let's say, at the roads against the reserves and the reserve rate that you've elected. We don't want to see another LID. And I'm curious what kind of ongoing analysis and study is done and planning is done to adjust reserves and stuff to avoid that.
That was the intent of our transportation benefit district. I also don't want to see another LID. I am excited to get this one paid off, hopefully, next year. And I don't want to see another one, it's my personal opinion. And there have been no internal talks whatsoever with the administration since I've started here, which was eight years ago, about doing another LID. So I'll be very open about that. I think there's other options available. I would try anything other than having to go down that route again, to be honest with you. But the transportation benefit district was created to collect the sales tax, to, in its sole purpose, is to use on our roads. And we are working on getting a street study done that assesses all the roads in the entire city, to at least get a plan together to figure out where we need to go next. Because we haven't really spent much of that sales tax money, so it's been accumulating for when we get to that point. But we need a plan to figure out what we need to do first, which is what we're doing right now. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, you had to just end exactly what I was gonna say. So we have Kim Lee-Horn that's doing the five-year street study for our streets master plan. That is past council, not this council, the one before that, so we're moving forward.
I don't think you want an LID either.
No, I don't.
When you got this program, how long did it take you to adapt and transfer all the information over to it?
That is a great question. I mentioned earlier, we are one of their few biennial budgeters.
Guinea pig?
Guinea pig, yeah, you could call us that. But it took probably about a month, I would say, to get all of our data mapped over. And now that we know what reports to pull out of our accounting system, it literally takes like five minutes every time we do a data dump to get our monthly financial reports in there. So, yes, in the beginning, because you have to go, and they ask your account structure, like going back to 2017, and we had a lot going on. It was a lot, but we got it done in about a month, and now it's running pretty seamlessly, so.
So do you have the information from 2017 in there? I thought I just heard you say three years.
The first line item is 2017, 2018, so it goes back to 2017. We consider the current budget not an actual year, so it goes back three biennials for the actual, and then our current budget.
So when you see a department or more than one department using a tremendous amount of overtime, what does that indicate as far as the biennial budget?
Those have been conversations we've been having internally with administration, and we are looking into that as we speak.
Anyone else? All right. Any closing remarks, Angie, before we...
No, I just, I clearly, I enjoy doing this. I appreciate everybody being here. And again, email me, call me if you have suggestions. I will note the one about being able to hover and get places. That's a great suggestion. So like I said, we're learning too, and anything that makes it more efficient, we would love the feedback. Because in the end of the day, this is for you. It's out there for the public to use. So whatever makes it easier or more efficient, we want to help with that. So I appreciate you being here.
And we want to say thank you very much. It's very incredible.
And thank you all for coming tonight. I was gonna enjoy the first clear night we've had in a while.